Okay, we'll go ahead and call the work session to order. Public comment, is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak? Seeing and hearing none, we'll have introduction to new employee, Mr. Gary Manzer. I'm sorry, Mr. Sean Christensen. The other one. Didn't mean to send you for a loop there.
All of us. I wasn't ready either.
Mayor members of the council, I don't have much as far as an introduction goes because he's only been with us for a couple of weeks, but Mr. Ben Saunders has joined our staff, a public works operator. He's been here two weeks, is starting his third this week. He's still coming back, so that's a plus. If he or Gary would like to say anything, I would welcome that. Otherwise, we welcome Ben Saunders.
So.
Morning, Gary.
Good morning, our afternoon, evening, something. I just want to tell you.
Looking to see if you're on your toes.
Ben is, was, four years, Ben?
Yeah.
Yeah, he worked for four summers going through college with us. And the first day Ben was there, he took command and just took a lead on things. We called him our most valuable part-timer in those days, but he's a good man and I'm really, really pleased to have him as part of our staff.
Perfect. Ben, you know, I've watched you growing up and, you know, I always knew something good would happen with you. And we're really blessed that you've chosen to be employed by the City of Wilmer and you'll do great work. You've got great people to work with out there and nice conversation on the way in. So, good luck with that new little baby and we certainly wish you well and thank you for accepting the position as, out of Public Works. So, thank you very much for being here. Now, you can stick around for the whole night. We should be done by 11 o'clock tonight, but if you want to go home early, that's fine. We understand, so.
Exactly.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you. Next on the agenda is used fire equipment donation and waiver. Chief Hanson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you is a request from the Maynard Fire Department for us to donate some used firefighting gear to them. I contacted Mr. Scott and he did up a waiver of liability. And this is all before you, so we're just getting your approval for the request.
Also, do you have any questions? Chief, there's one thing that you have in the memo and that is that NFPA standard 1851 talks about retiring all gear after 10 years.
That's correct.
Have you adopted that standard now? Or was that adopted by Chief Hendrickson?
Yes, that was adopted by Chief Hendrickson.
Okay.
So, that's what we've been following. We did put in the waiver that this gear does not, does no longer meet NFPA standards.
Current standards.
So, they know that when they signed the waiver form.
Right. Okay. The only concern I have about it is that, you know, that puts us on an automatic turnover of every 10 years. And that's a huge cost to our taxpayers.
We broke it up and the amount of calls that we're getting right now and the gear that we're getting probably about eight years out of the year. So, we're not replacing every set every 10 years where it's broke up, so we're replacing probably three or four sets a year.
Okay. And so then you've, so you've got that on your, your small tools?
Yes.
That you're replacing every year?
Yep. Substance of persons, I believe.
Okay. Thank you. And then I talked to the city attorney in regards to the state statute that they were going to try to get that passed last year and our, our understanding is it didn't pass? Is that correct?
That's correct. From what I've been told, yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Next, thank you, chief. Next, we have consideration of work session structure for future meetings. Our city attorney, Robert Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In your packet is a draft resolution. I did my best to listen attentively to the council's discussion of the changes it's looking to make to its work session format at the last work session on the 30th and drafted a resolution for your consideration. There's really two aspects that I think I should highlight for your consideration. The first, if you look on the first page of the resolution, in paragraph two, that's my attempt to implement what the council discussed about going back to chairpersons for the subject matters of the areas that were covered by the four previous subcommittees in your old structure. What paragraph two does is it says that, first of all, you're going to reappoint chairpersons for each of those four subjects. And then, once appointed, each chairperson would be responsible for coordinating with the city administrator and department directors for agenda items and information to be presented to the council at upcoming work sessions. And in addition to that, the chairperson would be responsible for leading the discussion at the council level in the work sessions. I believe that was consistent with the council's consensus, but certainly if there are any, any who heard the discussion otherwise, that would be a change we could make. Finally, in paragraph three, I thought the consensus was less clear from the council on whether you wanted to, at this point, move to have more work sessions than you have currently scheduled. I know there were some comments that maybe that's just too many meetings, but there certainly was discussed. Paragraph three, there's a couple routes you can go with it. I've put some language in brackets. First of all, the threshold question is if you're content with the existing schedule with the two work sessions a month and then fifth Mondays, you could simply just delete paragraph three and continue meeting as consistent with your existing schedule. Next, it's just a matter if you do want to add another meeting each month, picking a time and then deciding whether that time you've picked for the additional meeting is going to replace your fifth Mondays or supplement them. So, depending on what the council wants to do with additional meetings, we can tailor paragraph three to that discussion today and bring it back for your consideration, consistent with your direction today at the next meeting.
Thank you. When I read through what you had prepared, it appeared to capture, I know that not everybody was in agreement with everything, but that appeared to capture what the majority of the people were. So, I kind of heard it the same way you did, so at least two of us are on the same page, which is a good thing. So, council, what do you wish to, comments about this or we're just going to go to the next agenda item? Councilmember Schwantus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After having time to think about this and trying to realize what our goals were in really coming up with the best hybrid for this, what I heard was that we don't have time for business as usual for those committee meetings within the work session happening before the city council meeting. Of course, those four committee meetings being Public Works, Public Safety, Finance, Labor, and Community Development, that we're running out of, and I feel like we run out of time because we have bigger issues that we're trying to discuss and it eats up that time, so we don't have the committee discussion that we should perhaps be having. And I consider some of those bigger discussion items are priority areas, like we should be having conversations about City Hall and the community center. We have the MUC discussion we tried to get on the agenda, which was very difficult to do. We've got some master plans that are coming and presentations for those. This conversation even about the committee structure, we're going to have the Eagle Lake sewer system that we're going to need to talk about and things. And those things take time from our regular work session. And I hear the discussion about wanting to have chairpeople for the different committees and I don't really have a particular feeling in regard to that, but I think that there's real value to having everyone present at the meetings to hear the same thing at the same time. It does build trust in my mind and it also avoids us having to read those minutes from the meetings. So, what my recommendation actually would be is to keep the working sessions as we've had it, to put the committee meetings within the working sessions, two at each meeting, two being, actually almost making it five, one being Public Works and adding Public Safety as a separate one. And then having those two at the first meeting of the month and the second meeting of the month to do Community Development and Finance. And then we create another meeting that would be like the third or the fourth Thursday of the month, just because that works for me, to be quite honest. But we make that a meeting that focuses on labor and then are those priorities that are longer discussion items. So, that would give us time to be able to talk about those things that are more involved and require greater discussion. We don't have to worry about running out of time because of a city council meeting starting at seven. And yet, by having those meetings on this extra meeting day, it would also allow us to then make our work sessions very efficient in dealing with those more traditional, more mundane, I'm not, you know, types of discussion items. I would also continue with the fifth Monday of the month and if we choose to have committee chairs for those committees, so be it. And during the work session, that portion of the meeting could simply be handed over to that committee chair for that portion of it. If we happen to not have any labor items or any priority items, greater discussion items, we could simply cancel that extra meeting of the month, but to try and schedule one just seems to be about impossible with everyone's busy schedule. So, I would like to offer that as an option for discussion.
Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, great segue, councilmember Schwantus. And I do like the idea of a hybrid because after experiencing both types of structures, I did like in the past for committee meetings, I liked the ability to kind of delve into a little bit deeper discussion in detail, especially with those department heads and directors when there were specific questions coming up. However, there is the issue of efficiency, time efficiency, scheduling, all that made for a lot of meetings. And some of those would, you know, some of those discussions would be deeper discussions that would take up some time. But I do think that it's a, it's a great idea to get more efficient, to work through the process because we've been going like this now up until this point. I think if we can come up with a hybrid like that, we may be able to get the greater level of detail that we want while still being able to be efficient and inform everybody at the table, make, you know, there's no group of people that feels like they're left out because they didn't have time to go back and listen to the minutes or read through the minutes, whatever. And also a greater level of transparency to the public about what's being talked about because not everybody was aware of the subject matter of all those particular subcommittees. Third point is I think, yeah, doubling down on the time and the scheduling, I think, you know, it's an election, it's an election season and I think we want, we have a great community full of people that could potentially be interested in city government and taking part and stepping up and being involved. But we don't want to have a schedule or a system that, I don't want to say disenfranchises, it's the wrong word, but you know what I'm getting at regarding, you know, meeting times. We wouldn't want quality people saying, you know, I'd love to do that, but I can't do that because I'm just not going to be able to make that committee meeting or I'm not going to be able to do committee meetings. And so, you know, just for that one reason and one reason alone, we're missing out on a great pool of people. And so, I think an idea like working a hybrid system that, you know, is after work hours may lend itself to kind of, you know, future greatness and, you know, establishing a good system to move into the future with in terms of who's going to be at the table, topic of discussion, amount of detail that we have time to actually get into. And I think it'll lead to all of us being more well-informed. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question, I know back when we had committee structures, there were sometimes a time when Public Works needed something done right away or Finance needed something approved. So, the structure that you suggested, it actually could work if something came up that we moved the one committee to the first meeting and the other to leave that kind of open for when those meetings would take place. I don't know how everybody feels about the Thursday, if other people have issues, if that's something that we need to make sure people are available on that day. I don't know how you'd pick one personally, kind of, so I'm not opposed to that, but I do think that we should make sure that it fits everyone's schedules. So, if Thursday's a good option with that, but that would be just the one concern that we're able to react and not have to wait a whole month for things to get from work session to council meeting, so.
Mr. Holland, do you see an issue with, I know one of your goals is to get that yearly calendar out and for everybody follow that yearly calendar. I mean, if we do that, the issue of, we shouldn't have, we should have less surprises, right? That's kind of your goal?
Yes. Yes. If we.
The other thing that I had, that I had asked that, and Robert and I had talked about was changing the start time to 5:00 rather than 5:15. And the only reason for that is all of our, the rest of our meetings start on the hour and it just makes it easier if we have it starting on the hour. Now, this is not a big hang-up of mine, don't, don't get me wrong here. I think we're, I think we're coming to a good, a good process here and I don't want to throw cold water on a, on a good idea here, but, I mean, I would like to see us go to that, that 5:00. And then, I mean, if you can't be here right at 5:00, we understand, but, you know, at least then it's not, you know, is it supposed to be, am I supposed to be there 5:15 today or 7:00 or what time am I supposed to be there? So, does anybody have objection to that time?
I don't have objection to the time. I would just say that if you're going to do that, to maybe move the public input to a little bit later for folks that might be working a traditional nine-to-five job, that would show up here a little bit later.
So, we do that as a second or third agenda item?
Yeah.
Yep.
I know you had expressed concerns about whether we're going to have enough time in the work session to do everything we've been doing and put that committee structure back in place. I think the last time we had talked about trying it for six months, I'm just curious with, we can change this whenever we want, it's just a matter of updating, correct?
Right. That's correct. You know, the first time we did it, we kind of, we kind of passed it. There wasn't, not, I mean, there was a lot of discussion in regards to it. So, we said six months, we evaluated it about eight months, then we kind of went another period of time, but the council can change what they're doing when they choose to change what they're doing. So. So, two meetings ago for the work session, we only had one thing on the agenda and then I added a bunch of stuff. What I like about what's being proposed is that we'll have input from more council members rather than just from the mayor and the city administrator. So, those individual council members then would, would be digging deeper and there would be a responsibility that comes with that. And I know you guys are all up to the task. Any one of you could be the chair of one of these committees and I think any one of you would do a great job. But we just need to understand that with that responsibility then comes the efficiency of getting back with Mr. Holland or Janelle or Judy when an issue comes up so that we get those agenda items feted. I like what's being proposed. I think this is a good compromise as we're calling it a hybrid. We still have the different groups meeting. The finance really ends up with the meeting by itself, if you will, because a lot of the community development stuff, you know, that comes straight to the council because public hearings, you really don't have a conversation in regards to that. I mean, you know, and like I said la, two, three weeks ago now, you know, we haven't had a problem with community development. I mean, they've always been at the table, they've always given us the information we've needed. And so, I think that really is going to expand the time that our finance director is going to have to prepare and present to us. And I know that, you know, you hate to say that one thing's a priority over something else, but finance is a big deal and what we do on the finance side of things is very important, in my opinion, so. And I think, I think most of us here sitting around the table will take that very seriously. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I think it's important to have all four committees report at each meeting. To do finance once a month or Public Works once a month doesn't make sense. Second of all, I noticed on here it says the council shall appoint from its membership its chairperson. I think we need to go back to seniority and have the senior-most member pick which committee he wants to be on or not be on if he wants to chair one, go to the second one, the third one, the fourth one, so we can show some leadership amongst the council. I think that's very important. I had a third topic and it skipped my mind here, but the, I know what it was, it was at these committee meetings, we would vote to pass it on to the full council. From what I've heard, all we're going to do is give the information and then bring it up again at the council meeting and then pass whatever we agreed upon. Why couldn't we vote at the work sessions to pass it on the full council and put it in the consent agenda?
Is there a legal problem with that if the council votes?
I mean, all it is is a recommendation to move it forward.
Correct. Mayor and Councilmember Christensen, there's no legal prohibition against taking a formal motion and vote or formal recommendation in a work session. I think that rule has been established by the council just out of your preference for how to handle it, but you can change that at any time.
So, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're talking about, Councilmember Christensen. So, basically, if we voted on something at the work session, and a good example probably would be like the used fire equipment. I mean, probably people aren't going to have a big heartburn with that. That would then move to consent, so it wouldn't be an agenda, an agenda item that was talked about then unless somebody wanted to pull it. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, I'm bringing it up for discussion. That way, we don't regurgitate it again and, I mean, because that was some of the complaints about committee to the council, we'll go all over it again and it's just a thought. I mean, I'd like to hear what others have to say.
Councilmember Schwantus followed by Nelson.
Sorry. Thank you.
Followed by one of you over there.
I like having the opportunity to have it presented and then giving us the time to be able to think about it and react to it. It also allows the public an opportunity to respond back to us if they have a different point of view or if it's an important item to them or there's something that we just overlooked or didn't take into consideration. So, for those items that are bigger items, I prefer having that opportunity to bring it back. So, I like this where we have the work sessions to talk about it and then, and then bringing it back to the council meeting. I have no problem moving something that's such as the turnout gear to the consent agenda item. I think that's efficiency.
Councilmember Nelson followed by Mesky followed by Palmer.
I agree with Councilmember Christensen on the recommendation process. I still like, as Councilmember Schwantus said, to have that not go right to the agenda but for time to review and to do that at the next one. And I think that with the recommendation at the work session, we've had a few times where we've had discussions at the work session and there hasn't been consensus and it somehow shows up on the agenda the next time. And so, I think whether we need to take the action to say we're not ready for this to be on the next agenda or having that recommendation in process, if we make that recommendation, it goes forward. If there's more information that needs to happen, then we have to have another work session versus it just automatically showing up there without us having additional input.
So, let me just ask a clarifying question for myself. So, if there, what I look at as consensus, if I have five heads nodding, I'm telling the administrator to move it forward because if we're waiting until we have eight heads nodding affirmative, then you're never going to have a discussion. So, I think some of that has to happen in the public eye at the meeting. I think that's healthy. And to have it, you know, we shouldn't all, we all come to the table with different strengths and I think that that gives the public the opportunity to see those strengths that each of us have. You know, I know Councilmember Alvarado may agree with something that Councilmember Osmus doesn't agree with. Have them have that dialogue is healthy and to see, the public to see that. So, basically what I'm looking at is if I have five people nodding affirmatively, I'm viewing that that we moved it forward unless I'm missing what you're saying.
I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I think we've had a couple of times where we haven't had agreement and, and didn't ask for additional conversation. So, I just want to clarify that if we don't agree with something, then we need to speak up so that it doesn't just show up on the agenda. So, I agree with what you're saying, yes. If we wait for all of us to agree, we'll never get anything done.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, it wasn't my intention to, to pass it on to the council that night. I agree with, two weeks.
Yep.
And if it needed to be discussed, anything can be pulled from the consent agenda.
Right.
If it's something really, really important, pull it and discuss it, you know, and then tell the public what we talked about, basically.
Councilmember Mesky followed by Palmer.
I'm in agreement with most of what's here. Paragraph three, I knew that we weren't in agreement, so thank you for putting this I would concur with how we've been operating. When, when you think there's a consensus, we move it forward and sometimes we do it that night and not. You need that flexibility to do that and I think if you have chair folks in charge of that, they will help mediate that. If it's something that needs, if they need more information, that chair will be involved in gathering more information for the next meeting. So, I don't see that as a problem. The comment about putting all the items on each agenda, I think that's the way you have to do it. Maybe you'll give priority to two of them, but things come up and we have to be able to, to react to those things as they come up. The seniority idea for chairs, I mean, it should be a consideration, but if you have some folks that has their expertise, they may be able to handle that earlier on, but it could be something to be considered. I don't think that's the only criteria, but it certainly can be one. Other than that, I, again, I'm, I'm fine with whenever we move the meetings to do the work. One thing about moving it on the same day in light of our conversation last time is that if these work sessions can be live so people can track both, then I'm in favor of doing something like that. But if they are not, we have to stop that practice, especially if you're going to talk about putting things on consented items for the council meeting, then no one hears any of the conversation until after that vote has happened and that can't happen. And so, if we're going to be having both of these meetings live, I'm in favor of that. If we're not, we can't, we have to discontinue doing that.
Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excellent discussion. I think all, all viewpoints and perspectives are coming from good places here. Yeah, I'll, I'll agree with Councilmember Christensen. I did like back when we had the separate committees, I did like, you know, there were some ideas or there were some projects or whatnot brought to the table at that time and it was almost a kind of a pre-vetting sort of deal. And in, in, in pre-vetting the idea, we did know, although it was a little bit less transparent, when it got to the council table, it was a little bit more thorough of an idea. So, if there's something that wasn't a complete, you know, the committee could kick it back to staff, staff could kind of rehone it, reshape it, whatnot, and then when it came back again, we could make sure it was crafted thoroughly. So, by the time it came to the council, it was kind of a nicely wrapped package and I think that saved us time during our actual council meeting. So, we're, we're talking about the amount of time that we're spending in work session or in committee, but then there's the other issue of the time that we spend in council and sometimes the more time we spend in work session is going to then translate into more time we're spending in council meetings. Whereas I think if we can, especially the idea of having chairs, you know, take some ownership, take some leadership of these issues and have some of that weight fall on individual shoulders to, okay, now this is, you know, this is your baby, you got to make sure that it's wrapped up nicely and so that it can be presented and digested as a nice, nicely wrapped package for council and it's been kind of honed with staff. I really like that idea and I think it's going to result in good, good things. Good discussion. Thanks.
On that third week, I heard Councilmember Nelson say that that meeting would be on a Thursday. Councilmember Schwantus, is that what you proposed, was it Thursday?
You know, and that could be just as easy as sending out a Google, something or another poll to see what date works for people.
For that third week you're talking?
That's kind of what I was suggesting. That's kind of, she, she mentioned Thursday. I just think that might be a great idea just to confirm that people are okay with Thursday.
Okay.
That it works for everyone.
Okay.
Does it matter which Thursday, the third week, the third Thursday?
Well, it would be, it would be the third week is what was proposed. So, the first week, you would have your regular agenda items, then the second council meeting, you'd have your agenda items and then your extra day that would come in would be that third week is when you'd have your extra meeting. That's what I heard. Is that correct? And then on the fifth, you, the fifth would automatically always be scheduled unless there was.
Fifth Monday.
The fifth Monday would always be scheduled and then if there was nothing to speak about or talk about, then the administrator, after having conversed with the four chairs. or talk about, then the administrator, after having conversed with the four chairs, would then just simply cancel that.
Okay.
Or the administrator could also cancel that third week meeting as well.
Okay.
If there was nothing to talk about.
I do have my library committee meeting.
On Thursday?
On that third Thursday.
Just send out a poll.
Send out that.
Yeah. And staff can do a doodle poll on that. I mean, after that first meeting, if we know there's gonna be a meeting on the third, we can send out a doodle poll, who's, when can the most people make it? Send that information, then we have it. So, additional, Councilmember Mesky.
Just to clarify, then, in the chapter three, what we are saying is that if there is not a fifth Monday-
Yep.
Only in those conditions, otherwise, we're having first and third have a work session, council meeting, and then when there's not a fifth one that we have on the Mondays, then we're doing the third week somewhere.
Right.
Okay.
So, you would always have three work sessions scheduled every month?
Right.
And on the fifth Monday, you would always have that fifth Monday meeting as well? That's what I'm hearing. Is that right?
So, we're staying away from the second and the fourth week?
Correct.
Okay.
But the second and fourth week, you would decide if you were going to have a meeting or not through that doodle poll. But it wouldn't necessarily be on a Monday, is what we're saying.
My understanding was that we were scheduling this third one, if there wasn't a fifth Monday, there would be, it would be the third Thursday, unless there wasn't anything to discuss, and then it could be canceled, but it was on the calendar, so it was always there, because if it wasn't there, we wouldn't be able to schedule it. It would be very difficult. Easier to have it scheduled and cancel it.
Sure.
Correct?
Correct.
That's what I heard.
That's my intention.
Yeah.
That's not what I heard, but good, okay.
Okay.
Good, we're clarifying. And our city attorney's nodding, he's in agreement. I'm seeing consensus here, I'm ready to move on. Is anybody else not ready to move on?
Just to clarify, we're gonna get a doodle poll to see what day of the week that should take place?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Begley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thought I was gonna forget you, didn't you?
Yeah, that would've been okay. So, as a chairperson, I would think you'd be talking with department heads-
Right.
-before you're talking with the administrator.
Well, we should have everything funnelled through the administrator, so the administrator knows what's going on. The administrator shouldn't have surprises.
No, that's true, but the department heads are gonna know their business a little better than administrator.
Correct.
So, you should talk with them first and then move it on to the administrator.
Yeah, however the chair and that department director wanna do it, I don't have a horse in that race.
Okay. And then, why don't we just do every Monday for a meeting instead of one week have a Thursday here?
Okay.
It just-
I know I can't make that work. I know I can't. I've changed my other, the Mondays for these evening meetings. I switched it to off Mondays, so I have work-related meetings, and Monday is, would be impossible for me.
It just gets confusing. Oh, we're meeting this Monday, oh, no, we're gonna meet on this Thursday, and it just-
Well, when we were doing committee meetings, you met Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, depending on what committee you were on, and that was every other week.
You got to pick what committee you wanted to be on, too, so you could work with your schedule. Mondays and Thursdays work for me, but it doesn't matter.
Yeah. We all have to give and take a little bit to try to make it work for the-
You do.
...majority. Mr. Scott, I think, have you captured what we're talking about?
I believe so, but to be clear, just so, if there's any questions, we can address them now. I believe there was consensus to move work sessions to 5:00, not 5:15. I believe there's consensus, or we'll maybe pick the day, but what I heard was, the third work session in days that do not, or, excuse me, in months that do not have five Mondays would be on the third Thursday?
Or maybe a Tuesday.
That's to be determined?
Yep, yep. Whatever.
Keeping the fifth Mondays all as regularly scheduled work sessions.
The only thing we really didn't hammer out, and the thing that we'll have to have, is we'll have to have an organizational meeting at the next council meeting. We'll have to have an organizational meeting, and that's where your chairs will be selected. And the recommendation from Councilmember Christiansen was to go by seniority, and so you're gonna have to discuss at that time if that's what you wanna do. But the four committees would be Labor, Finance, Community Development, Public Works, Public Safety. That'd be the four committees.
So, why do we have to wait till next time to organize?
Well, I look to see if it's on the agenda. It's not on the agenda. We can do it. I have no problem doing it, adding it as an agenda item. Does anybody not want that? I mean, we've talked about it, this is the second meeting we've talked about it, we certainly can, we certainly can vote on it tonight, so I have no problem with that. Okay. So, you guys will have to huddle between this meeting and the next one to find out who's gonna be committee chairs, and I want four of them. I don't want three, I don't want two, I want four. If we're gonna do this, let's have chairs. Okay, I'm getting off my soapbox.
What happened to letting the city administrator know if you were interested?
I'm assuming you didn't hear from anybody, is that correct? Oh, you did, oh, I'm sorry.
I did.
Okay.
I had Sean and Audrey for Finance, and Ron for Public Safety, Public Works.
Sean and Audrey?
For Finance.
Yep.
And Ron Christiansen for Public Safety.
Public Works, Public Safety is Ron.
Labor.
Sean actually said labor, though.
Sean said labor.
Yeah, I didn't, I told him on the phone, but I didn't put it in writing.
Okay, so you did not say Finance?
No.
Okay, so then we don't have anybody for Community Development?
Well, I was gonna go for it, but he was on vacation or up at a meeting, so I was gonna send him an email. I don't email very good, so.
That's probably true.
But it's supposed to be a discussion here at the table.
Absolutely.
Right, but we're just simply asking who-
It can change, too.
It can change once you get to the meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Correct. So, we have Plowman and Begley that are both interested in Community Development. Okay.
There's an appropriate-
We will move that to the agenda. Next, we have community ed, oh, Robert, the other thing is, is that, or actually Judy, or whoever's putting the agenda together, the public comment will move to the fourth item on the agenda. Community Ed and Rec position, first off is the Adult Enrichment Community Center Supervisor. Mr. Holland.
Well, I'll try to paraphrase this as best I can. This is on the agenda tonight for a couple of actions. Couple, last meeting or meeting before that, I can't remember, but we made, the council made the motion to stop the hiring of the community center position, and there was even a proposal to stop the CER Director position, but that was not the case. But there was a lot of interest in that position and whether we should change that description, and, you know, who's doing the hiring, and when is it gonna be hired, and there's lots of questions. Unfortunately, Mr. Brizendine is not here tonight. He should be, but he's not, but he has an excuse, he's on vacation right now, but having said that, normally, I wouldn't have put this on the schedule with him not being here. It's his department. Having said that, subsequently, the mayor, myself, and Councilmember Nelson had a meeting with the school district, Dr. Holmes, and two of their board members, and we talked about the future of CER. You know, CER, just so you remember, you know, when I got here, I got here a year ago, and guess what was on the subject? CER. We've been dealing with this topic since my arrival. We had to renew the contract. We did do that for 18 months with very little changes, other than some things about the advisory board and its roles and responsibilities, and we've done that. But since that time, some questions still persist, and I think that with the departure of Mr. Brizendine, he's scheduled to leave at the end of June, which is less than 60 days now, or, you know, 40 days, 45 days, and the school district is concerned about the future of that position and about our agreement and whether we're gonna continue it. And basically, to be frank, it was because of the vote that was taken here by this council. That has led them to question the involvement that the city wants to have with that independent organization that we both created, and to what level this council wants to be involved in the operations and the organizational structure. And so, that's what Dr. Holmes and I discussed. Subsequently, I did send you a memo from the meeting notes that Dr. Holmes took from our discussion, which was basically looking at the options of dissolving that contract, which we can do. And then, what would be the fallout to dissolving the CER? I also put in there my recommendation that we do not do that. And I think that, you know, just right now, because we're having this meeting without previous discussion, tells you the importance of it, because, as I said, Mr. Brizendine is leaving. Now, I asked Dr. Holmes, I said, okay, he leaves in 45 days, you know, the world's not gonna end, is it? No. So, let's not get it out of perspective. You know, we all can leave, and guess what? Things continue to go on, and people make arrangements. So, I caution you to keep that in perspective. I don't want this to seem like we have to make a decision, or that you're forced into making a decision tonight. But I will say that it was emphasized by Dr. Holmes to me that the quicker we get this matter settled, the better for both parties, and I would agree with that statement. So, there's been a lot of back and forth with, you know, Dr. Holmes and I discussing the different options. You know, that position, the CER Director position is advertised. I don't know how many applications they have. Last time I talked to him, which was about a month ago about that, I think they had a half a dozen or so positions that were interested. But even if we get someone in here and we interview, you know, how that can take, if you're somebody from out of town, could take, you know, that could take 60 days before they arrive. So, all of these things are out there floating. So, tonight, what I would like to discuss and answer any questions that I can, like I said, I think Mr. Brizendine is more of an expert on the organizational structure, and of course, he's been there for 20 years, as far as the history. I'm glad I've just mentioned that, because I'm thinking, 20 years, 20 years, the city and the school has had this arrangement, and it's an unusual arrangement, as I've said before, when we renewed the contract, that a lot of communities do not have this type of arrangement. And what happens is, you have duplication of effort, number one, which costs the community money. Number two, you have lack of efficiencies, which frustrates parents that have multiple children, especially in multiple sports. So, there's a lot of positive things. Is it perfect? No, it's not perfect. But what the school district is asking us tonight is, number one, do we really, are we willing to commit to continuing, you know, and finishing at least the contract term, which runs into next year? And if so, can they do it with confidence that, that they hire a person, that they won't be skeptical to take this position, that they have a future? And so, we have to basically show a vote of confidence in the CER organization. And then, lastly, we need to look at that community center position, and I haven't asked Samantha today whether anybody submitted anything to her. Samantha, did any of the council submit any suggestions or recommendations? So, at the last meeting, we said, if you have recommendations, or you have changes in that description, to send that to Samantha, and she will compile that, but she just acknowledged to me that she did not receive that from anyone, and I did not receive any suggestions or recommendations either. So, that's the two things we're addressing tonight, is, you know, do we wanna continue the relationship, or do you need some more information? We'll bring it back in two weeks, we'll talk some more. I can ask Dr. Holmes if he'd like to attend, or somebody from the school board. And then, secondly, you know, should we look at that community center position, which is unfilled, and look at filling it? So, turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
I was at the same meeting, but there's some different takeaways for me, from what I heard at that meeting. There are changes to the agreement that we agreed to, and the school is asking whether we're going to be able to implement those also. So, it was very clear in that meeting that the new contract is programming only. There will not be building management, park development, all of those things, and we have not had a discussion as to how we're going to handle those, but it's been very clear from the school participants at that meeting that those items are no longer in the agreement. It was also very clear, I think they have put the Director position on hold until we clarify these items. They do not want to hire someone and jeopardize that person's career if we haven't ironed out the things that are in that contract and not in that contract. There are a variety of items that were listed on the email with that. This group of six of us intended to meet again, we were asked to document some things and to review some things, and we haven't met again. I want the best for community education and recreation, but I think we need to finish our due diligence with the school district and finish those conversations as to how this is gonna work. And then, we, as a city, I think, have a responsibility to understand what that organizational structure is going to be like, what's in it and what's not in it, where are the FTEs that we're paying for or not paying for going to be, and how are we going to subsidize the things that are no longer in that agreement? Not subsidize, but pay for the things that are no longer in that agreement. And so, I have concerns that we haven't finished the work. It's not the same agreement. And I think the other consensus was, until we make that decision, that we need direction for, who is this position going to report to? Is it still part of Community Ed and Rep? And I think the community center position, to me, is still up for grabs with, are we best suited for that as a city position? Is it going to be a joint position? Who will that position report to, and what will they do? And so, I'm not ready to move forward with this, and I think we owe Dr. Holmes and the school representatives that are working on this, there's lists of questions out there. I think we need to take, give them the chance to answer those, and for us to assume the responsibility of doing what we agreed to.
Mayor, if I may.
Councilmember Mesky.
My frustration on this is growing every meeting, as it is, I'm sure with others, and you are right, we've been talking about this for a year. Sometimes, we have plans that seem to involve other entities, that rise to a point where we sit down with the other entities, and we've been talking about that with utilities. I'm just throwing this out, are we at a position and a place now where we perhaps need to reach out to the school board and see if a joint meeting is necessary to hammer this out, because it seems like every meeting, I'm feeling like we're moving in a different direction, and it doesn't feel good. And if it's something that has value and it rises to that level, I don't know why a joint meeting might not help.
Councilmember Osmus.
Councilmember Mesky brings up a good point. I also agree. Part of the frustration in these discussions is I don't feel like we have enough information about exactly how the school has laid things out- about exactly how the school has laid things out, exactly how we have things laid out. And so I really feel like we need some input from Community Ed and Rec and the school to help us come to the decision. The other part is, with the other notes that we received, when I think about what's in the best interest of the taxpayers, the positions we would have to fill if we were not part of this partnership. I don't, I don't think, I can't speak for everybody in the council, but I don't think that our desire is to see this go away. Obviously, we all want it to work the best that it can. One of the things that possibly some of the other council members wouldn't be aware of, that I did forward some information to the mayor and the city administrator, was some information about the community center with the senior dining coordinator. Now, that is a Lutheran social services position, but it's been a very important part of the community center, in that they have dining there every day. The senior dining coordinator will be finishing her position on May 10th. And the volunteer coordinator is going to be done May 30th. So that kind of brought this up again because of the time crunch that we're in for the senior dining that takes place at the community center. The other issue with that is the volunteers that have been keeping the community center afloat. Jim has been a longtime volunteer. His health is starting to fail, and he may not be available very soon. So filling that position with the community center, I don't think we can, we definitely, we can't put that off for three months like was getting kicked around until the new CER director is hired. And then ideally, it would have been great, you know, and then let that person hire the community center. But we're at a point right now where we don't have that luxury. So I don't, we have to make a decision.
Councilmember Schantus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this agreement is really important to continue this relationship. And I think we have to be very careful about the message that we're sending to our partner as to our intent to work with them and to move forward with them. There's, what, 12 months left of the current agreement? And right now, we are making paralyzing decisions that are going to guarantee, if we stop and make no decisions going forward, if we hold everything until this future agreement is worked out, we are guaranteeing that there will be no partnership moving forward, and that is not acceptable. I think that the arrangement that we have now is in the best interest of our taxpayers. It provides better programming, it's better use of our facilities, it's better use of our staffing. There are a lot of employees involved in this that are going to be wondering what's happening with their jobs if this doesn't move forward. And I think it's in our best interest and the school district's best interest to continue this agreement. So I really encourage us to not micromanage this. This is a little bit, I know it's very different, but still, there's some similarity to what we did with the Rice Hospital and the KRS agreement. If you get too many people trying to come to the table to make this decision on what this future contract should look like, we're going to get nowhere, and we're going to continue to frustrate our partner. And I would actually recommend that we ask our administrators to come together, and the two of them, Dr. Holmes and Ike, to be able to work out an agreement, an arrangement, and bring that back to us, and then let us respond to that. If we, I'm just very concerned that if we try to micromanage this, that it will implode on us.
And just so we all remember, I mean, we do have a signed agreement now. Ike.
I just want to give a clarification from what Councilmember Nelson said. He said that this new document that we've signed, the buildings, the facilities, will now be paid for by us.
No.
Could you clarify what you meant by that? Because that's what I was hearing.
No, what I'm stating is, we were very clear that the contract only involves programming. I'm not against going forward this, with this, but the city will have additional responsibilities and additional costs because they aren't going to do park development anymore. They aren't going to do project management anymore. They aren't going to do building maintenance anymore. And so to say that we should just go forward with this, I don't think that we were prepared to implement the contract that we agreed to. And the, and the school very clearly in our meeting with the six of us said, "This is programming only." And I think they are asking us, "How are you going to do this?" Because we're not going to do this anymore. It's not going to contain some of the items that it did, and we're, are we prepared to do that? Do we have an organizational chart or staff that can take on the additional responsibilities that aren't there anymore? I don't think that's micromanaging. And I think we were in the middle of that discussion. And I think we need to resolve that to be the best partner at the table if we're going to stay in there for the programming and do what's best for the community. So, you know, we've been there. There were six of us at the table. We were asked to submit some information. That's where we're at. All I'm saying is, let's finish it so that both partners can feel that they have an agreement. Who's going to? The other thing was to clear out who's going to have the staff. If someone works and does all city work, there's supposed to be a city staff.
Right.
And so those are just the things. It doesn't mean walk away from the table. It simply means that we understand what we agreed to and a clarification of what it's going to cost us to implement that.
What I want to-
Councilmember Fagley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor, I wanted to clarify that, but I was just asking that question so I could clarify if I could finish.
I'd prefer to call on Councilmember Fagley.
Okay.
Councilmember Fagley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the important thing is let them hire their director so they can move forward. I don't know exactly what the issue is, because I wasn't in the conversation, but I served on the community ed board for many years, and we always, the city took care of our own buildings and our parks. The school took care of their buildings and their athletic fields. I don't know what has changed. It appears that there's a councilperson and a school board member that don't get it. And I'm dumbfounded. I mean, you should have been here when we had our own rec department, park and rec. And we merged to save the citizens money, and that's what they're doing. Now, I agree, there might be some employees that aren't doing a very good job for them. But overall, it's a good system, and maybe a new director will help out.
Mr. Holland.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to point out that since my arrival, and last year's budget and this year's budget, we put on a new roof out at the civic center. That's our building. The city paid for that. We paved the parking lot out there. We paid for that. We did some work in the auditorium. We replaced the lights. We worked on the firing range. The city paid for that. We've been paying for our own maintenance and our facilities. We've been coordinating that work. We've been deciding the low bid that comes before you, the bids, right? So what I'm proposing, the change with this new CER director, really is that the involvement the previous director had has lessened. And what I mean by that is he will still, he or she will still be part of the process in making recommendations, "Hey, you need to expand the pool. Hey, you need to replace this, you know, the stinger ball field," and so forth. Those things will still happen. But I think that, you know, talking with Mr. Brizendine over the 20 years, there was a lot of improvements that really didn't take place in our parks, as we all know, really, until the last, what, four or five years? We started cleaning out the parks and replacing all the equipment and everything. Those things have been in there for decades, right? And so he really didn't have that responsibility, and so it was kind of new for him. And some of these are large-scale projects. And I think that in our engineering department, in my background and some others, we have some expertise that we would like to use going forward, and that's all we're suggesting. But I-
I want to get it back to the council table.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
I heard what Councilmember Fagley said. And there are two of us that go to the Community Ed and Rec meetings. I will defend that there are changes that need to be made, and the school took the steps and put those changes into the agreement, okay? I'm not sure we're prepared to implement those. What we decide at the table here is fine, but I think there are unsolved issues that will come back and will be asked to, who's going to manage the million-dollar park projects that are going on this year? Where's the park development? Where's the park board going to, that's required by charter? Where's the park board going to be? There are lots of things that aren't resolved with what the role of Community Ed and Rec Advisory Board is. I'm just saying that we were in the middle of a conversation and trying to iron some of these things out to come back with a resolution, and now we're back to, let's just take it or leave it. So that's our decision. But I don't know where the school is at with some of the same things. If you read the documents that they got, there were questions. And Councilmember Osmus made a comment about what it's going to cost us. It will cost us either way. To stay in the agreement, we're going to have to pick up the pace on some of the things that we weren't doing, or going to be done differently. If we get out of the agreement, yes, we're going to have to pick up the pace. But we're still putting the money into the agreement right now that we agreed to. So the sorting out of where staff are going to be and who they're going to report to and what they're going to do has not taken place yet. And is that the role of the new director? Or how is that going to work? So it's fine. But those are the concerns that I have, and there are concerns that have come along with the agreement. And I'm just asking that we respect the school enough to finish the steps to make sure that we are going to follow this agreement for the long haul.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand many of Councilmember Nelson's concerns, and a lot of this stems from the history prior to Community Ed and Rec. When we came to this agreement, prior to that, we had a park and rec board that took care of the parks, and the city was involved, really involved, with park and rec. The school had community ed. When we merged, there was, I'm going to say, probably half of the employees were city employees, the other half, school employees. Well, as time goes on, the city employees have been retiring and going to other jobs. They're now 100% school employees. So we really aren't involved. All we do is write them a check and say, "Go do the job." So she has legitimate concerns. It's, we've been, what should I say, out of the mix for a while, and where is park development? Is it just public work that's doing it? Are there orders? Where is it? I don't know where we're at with it. But I agree with Ike. We're taking care of the buildings, there's no doubt about it, and we need to. But we aren't doing any programming of parks, recreation, and they're doing the community ed and parks and recreation. So that's where some of the concerns stem from, and I follow them. And I think from that agreement, which she stated, we're going to have to pick up the pace somewhere. At least somebody's got to give this director what we want to do with parks, because I don't think the director's been doing it.
Councilmember Mesky.
We're spiraling again. I would like to know, what are the next steps? I mean, I appreciate the history, and I understand where we're at, and I understand there's frustration. I would like that to be fixed. I mean, what does it take? If it's not the council meeting with the school board, if it's not the two administrators sitting down to talk about, what then? Because frankly, I'm done with sitting here and talking about these things and getting nowhere. We need to move this forward, and what does that look like? Because right now, I'm just hearing a lot of, we're still carping about the situation. I'm looking for some solution.
Okay, I want us to get towards a solution here. I mean, this is terrible for our public, what we're doing right now. This is a disgrace. It's very frustrating to me. We have an agreement in place. We're micromanaging our administrators. Councilmember Christensen said it right. We pay the school district to run this project. If you want the school district to say, "We're out, keep it up." Councilmember Nelson.
I just was going to comment that I thought we had a process in place, and I thought we were going to come back with a recommendation. You all got a copy of the items that came from our meeting on May 1st. There were 10 items in there that addressed some of the, some of those things. There were some consequences there if we drop out of them. I think that process needs to be finished. And I said it before, out of respect for the school and for the process, we need to get to a point where this can be a successful agreement. All I'm asking is for, is for that process to be finished with that, with the school board, with the committee that was set up.
Councilmember Osmus.
That's what I wanted the clarification on, is that when you talk about that process, you're talking about those six people. And was that successful? And is that the solution? And if it isn't, then what can we do? It can be successful.
We, we scheduled an hour and a half meeting. We didn't get through all the items on the agenda, and we agreed that the administrator, Mr. Holmes, would meet, and then the administrator, Mr. Holmes, Mr. Reynolds, and myself would meet, and then we'd get the six of us back together. That has not happened. You know, this agreement, I mean, Rick said it, I mean, this agreement has saved us a ton of money as taxpayers. And, you know, we have a good agreement. The school district has been great partners. They've been at the table, they've done what we've asked them to do. And I really appreciate the sacrifices that they've made trying to manage this thing. And, you know, I thought when we had the agreement signed, I thought we were on our way to a successful conclusion. The following meeting, we came back and we pulled the two positions. And now we're back at where we're at now. And, you know, Mr. Holland is right, we've been dealing with this for over a year that we've been at the table. And, you know, I don't want the school district to think that, you know, we're going to go into an agreement and then we're going to renege on it. I mean, they're just going to say, "Well, then in 18 months, are you going to be out or are you going to be in?" You know, because the message we're sending right now is that, well, we'll stick around for 18 months, then we'll leave. Well, that's not the message we want to send. Councilmember Osmus.
How I see that, then, is we signed the contract, they should go ahead with hiring their CER director, and then the heads should make the decision, or start working towards those decisions about who, who is going to be responsible for what? Is there going to have to be any shifting in, in any of the city's employees? And if we have to hire somebody, or if the school, or what? Help make those decisions, because we're, like we said, we're spiraling here. We're not, we're micromanaging. We don't need to make those decisions. So they need to hire their CER director, and we need to hire somebody for the community center. And to me, the only major decision on that is, are they a city employee then, or are they a school district employee?
And that decision's been made to be a city employee.
Okay. Then how are we going to start getting that process started?
At the meet, at the next meeting, you could simply make a motion to direct the administrator and HR director to hire that position and get the process moving. It's that simple.
I have to do that at the council meeting?
I can't emphasize enough how valuable this agreement is. I mean, our school district, Mr. Holland said when he came, he had not seen this type of an agreement before. You know, I remember when I started working for the city in January of 2000, and I believe that, if I remember right, Bruce Peterson over there, well, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Brizzy started in August, and I started in January, I think. So, so I worked side by side- So I worked side by side with Brizzy for a long time. And, you know, there's been some things that we haven't agreed with in the last year predominantly. And park development is one of them. And the administrator and I have had a conversation about that. He assures me that we have a plan in place to take care of our park development, and that we're going to get that done. So at the end of the day, let's give a positive message to the school district and tell them we want this agreement to stay in place. Let's let their administrators work it out. I agree with councilmember Nelson that the six of us need to get back together, and we need to all get on the same page. And then we can simply report back to you what we found. Because I don't think we're going to find that we're going to change a whole lot. I mean, the last meeting, we spent an hour and a half talking, and, well, you see the notes. Councilmember.
With all due respect, if the six of you don't agree, don't come back with something.
Ready to move to the next item on the agenda? I'm sorry, councilmember Elrato. I've been sitting there looking at you, waiting for you to raise your hand, and you haven't raised your hand all night.
Yeah, well, I'm contemplating. I think the consensus is that we want to work with the school district. I don't think there's any argument that we do not want to be partners. I think it's a great thing for our citizen, our community, and all of that. I think all the concerns are valid concerns. However, I believe we have to put the responsibility on, let's say, those six, the new director, and we've got to start getting somebody into the community center because we've got definite signs that things are going to start to, the wheels are starting to come off out there a little bit with retirements and volunteer leaders and stuff like that. So we have to move forward, but we still have to continue to communicate. Because the agreement is only in 18th month, and then we're going to go, we're going to be back here. And we don't want to be back here. We want to get everything ironed out so it's a nice transition. So I would encourage, keep the agreement between the two identities. Have the six talk. Move forward on the director, and move forward on the community director. That would be my hope and suggestion.
Sure, sure. And I just want us to understand that if the school district, after all of their deliberation, chooses not to continue in the process, that we understand that it was a mutually agreed-upon decision. I mean, it's not blaming the school district for something, and I don't believe they will be blaming the city for anything. So I think we can move this forward. Next item on the agenda is the holiday lights discussion. Mr. James Miller.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it is my request, and the request of Wilmerfest, that we talk a little bit about where the holiday lights could happen. We've had meetings with Mayor Kelvin, Minister Holland, and Gary Manzer from Public Works about putting the lights this year out at Robins Island. And I guess that would be our request, to be able to move forward with that as our location for the planning purposes, moving forward with holiday light celebration.
You know, we've had a lot of conversations over the last year and a half in regards to this, James.
We have.
And I really appreciate your leadership. So, council, I think what the request is, is you would like us to discuss that, see if that's going to work for us. I will just say as an introduction as well, that the Robins Island master plan, that'll be coming to the council on the 21st, that does have that ring loop that's currently there, the roadway, that that potentially could be used if the council so chose to use that as the route for the holiday lights. Or they could come up with another plan as well. So that's kind of what's on the table. Council, any input, any direction, any conversation that you'd like to give to Mr. Miller?
Councilmember Mesky.
What do you need infrastructure-wise to pull this off? Because I'm thinking electricity might be a problem.
That is probably the million dollar question right now, and that's part of the process. We want to know where the site is first, so we can start putting our planning meetings together with input from staff. But we're going to have some community members on that table. Power is going to be a concern. Where we can link up with the new park plan that'll be presented for Robins Island is, again, looking at where the future connection points are and what we can do with that part of it. But our intent is to carry forward this year and get it up, and make sure we have no down year in between things. We've looked at it from a board standpoint, at where there is power now, and we're quite familiar with locations that have been used for Rockin' Robins. There's a power pole and access right on the beach that we've used for Wilmerfest for the band for that part of it. So we know there's some locations where we know where the power is. It's a matter of figuring out if we need to use temporary power, or if we can run some lines, and what that would look like. But again, it's having that site in place before we start really getting into the nitty-gritty, so to speak, with that. But I think that's the biggest issue. We've looked at traffic patterns and what that might look like. I think Robins Island is really the prime choice for that, because there's so many opportunities, both with the existing footprint and what it might look like in future years.
I mean, I think that's the natural place for it, myself as well. But were there other sites that you've looked at?
We had some discussions about potentially if we wanted to go with more of a walking-type light display, you know, a little bit more like what Bentleyville would be up in Duluth, that maybe Swanson Field would be a potential, because there is the existing walking trail through that area behind Baker Diamond. Ike Holland also recommended what, out by the civic center, there's a plot of land out there that would be potential. That might have some more infrastructure issues when it comes to power. I'm not certain what would be out there, but I'm sure we could figure it out. Our concern was if the end goal and the end idea was to be at Robins Island, which I think is still the place to be, even doing it for a year or two somewhere else just creates some of those questions and doubt. I think if we're going to do it at Robins Island, we do it at Robins Island.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, if you did it at the civic center, we have all these hockey tournaments.
Exactly.
And all these outside people would see that.
There's a valid point there. I think you have some traffic issues.
Yeah, that could be.
And that was our concern with Swanson is too, because it's so residential there, that you definitely would have some traffic issues.
And you definitely need a big area. I mean, it can't be.
I think it opens up the potential. I mean, if you go back to where Kuzman's Land is, it was pretty small and pretty tight-in. Robins Island gives us a lot of room to grow, and a lot of potential for a lot of things. Plus, it shows off that jewel of our city. It really does.
Councilmember Chant.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I think this is exciting. I thank you and the organization for taking it on. This is a gem for our community, and I think Robins Island is a great place for it to be. With all the things that are happening there, with the excitement that's happening at the island, this is just one more thing to bring into the mix. So I just wanted to say thank you very much for the work and effort and all the time that you're putting into it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fagili, followed by Paulman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Miller. Robins Island is my choice. And then after I found out at our Robins Island meeting that they could leave the loop open so we could use it in the winter, that'd be the ideal space. Little toddlers and senior citizens would love to just sit in the car and drive through. That'd be my.
Gives us a lot of options.
Councilmember Paulman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I think we have the perfect group heading it up. All the events that you guys plan and have taken ownership of over the years have only gotten better and better, so I'm feeling super optimistic about it. Yeah, and secondly, with everything that's happened at Robins Island and all the improvements, and the fact that we as a council and as a community, we realize that that's an asset, that's a golden apple in our community. Everything that we can do to add to that, now if it can be kind of a four seasons deal where we have events going on all throughout the year out there, anything we can add to that's just going to add to the area draw, and also for our local residents. I think it's great.
We appreciate your confidence.
Super confident.
Maybe misguided, but we appreciate it.
No, we got every reason in the world to be confident and trusting that this is going to be a good thing.
Thank you. Councilmember Elrato.
Yeah, I like your idea of Robins Island also. I like the enthusiasm of your group. I think when, once it's decided, I think you'll probably be able to pull together a lot of people. And I like the idea that not only can people drive through, I'm sure there's going to be opportunities to walk around and get into the fields and take pictures. So I think there's a lot of positive options. So I appreciate your suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we're hopeful that there will be both walking and driving opportunities, and at some point, skating opportunities, depending on where things go with the new plan.
Perfect, perfect. Sounds great. Okay, I think you have direction. And I will just simply make the request for Mr. Holland, that we put Mr. Miller first on the agenda next council meeting. Because we have in the past kept him late.
No worries.
And the last time, we kept you late again. So we'll try to get you in and out. And tonight, we have you as the last item, second to the last item. So thank you for your tenacity. Thanks for what you do to the community. You know, without your leadership, this wouldn't be going where it is. And I know there's a lot of people in the community that would like to do some fundraising if that's needed. And the sooner we can get you that answer, the sooner they'll be able to work on that. So thank you for your wisdom.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate that. Next, we have brush site discussion. Our public works director, Mr. Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Actually, I'm going to turn over the majority of the talking to Mr. Manzer, the public work superintendent, because his guys are the ones that are out there working it and doing it and seeing the issue that we're going to talk to you about tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Thanks, Sean. As you all know, that Kennewa County shut their brush site down to commercial haulers. And this discussion's been going, we started talking about this winter a little bit. And the issue really comes in the fact that we used to burn our brush years ago, and once the wastewater plant got in place out there, and we would have issues with burning. And when you burn brush, you still don't get rid of all your logs, and the bigger stuff can burn for weeks, sometimes months. So you're excavating and burying all those burn sites. So anyways, and the MPC really rather you chip it. Well, then, bush mills came into place in Penson, and they used the chips for their plant there. And then we had no problem getting rid of our stuff. Companies would come in for a minimal fee, set up on our site, grinder chips, haul them away. Minimal cost to the city. They clean up our site. Everybody was happy. Bush mills shut down. So now that same job goes to $20,000, and you get to keep your chips. And I'm talking, last year, we hauled away 76 semi-loads of chips for two-thirds of the summer of brush out there. I met with Jeff Bredeberg, many conversations with him on what to do. He said he had close to $40,000 invested in chipping his pile, and he's got all these chips he doesn't know what to do with out there. So they came to the conclusion to shut down commercial haulers, because a good portion of what you deal with is from commercial haulers. We did a little bit of a survey. We checked other towns around what they do. Just kind of a quick note, Alexandria does not operate a brush site. It's a privately-run facility. So you pull into Alexandria's, whoever operates it, you pay whatever the cost they are charged to dump. Marshall has a brush site that's open 24/7. They burn the brush. It's way out of town, nothing around them. And they haul garbage once a week to the landfill that gets dumped there. It's unsupervised. And they get everything from refrigerators to stoves to plywood. Luchfield operates their sites similar to ours, and they hire all their chipping and hauling. Sartell require their people to buy a permit for $30 for residents, non-residents. They listed certain towns. St. Cloud wasn't one of them, but I think it was like St. Stevenson. They could do it for $60. And only accepted yard waste, and only accepted brush, not logs. Mankato has a site that's open with their landfill, and then they offer curbside pickup for a fee, of course. Homestead County goes to the landfill and charges by the cubic yard a ton. So we talked about it, and last year, I got kind of lucky. I had worked with this company out of, it's called Creekside. It's the city of Hutchinson. They run their business. They chip, and they start chipping wood, and then they're, also, they bag compost. Thing I had going for us is that we had about eight years' worth of compost piled up out there that they were interested in getting. So they came in and chipped our brush pile, hauled out 76 loads. Costs us $100 a load to get the chippings out. And they screened our compost and took about five years' worth of compost that got it off of our site. They're willing to work with us on that because they like our compost, and so they can keep the chipping cost down. The problem is that when we have people, and the city ourselves, when we cut trees down, we do run into lumber or logs that are bigger. But these rotor choppers that they have can only chip an 18-inch log. If it gets over 18 inches, they've got to split those logs. Well, 18 inches isn't really a big log when you look at it. And so anyways, what I was getting at was, we've got a good deal going with them, but with the county shutting down, they're taking the commercial haulers. Everything's coming our way now. And we've got a system where we've, I've changed a lock three times in our facility. I just recently changed it to when people had keys for it, were our employees. I gave the school a key. Municipal utilities had a key. Wastewater's key, civic center's key, basically just departments, no commercial haulers. And we still end up with stuff. We had a tree that was cut up, hauled out to our site, and underneath the tree was a storage shed that they had loaded up and hauled in there with us. We had to pull all those boards out and clean that up. What happens when you have these companies that come in and chip for you? They'll chip for you, but then you have an agreement that if they run into concrete or something that damages their knives, that's at the cost of the city. We've had truck rims go through those chippers before that people dump off in that pile. So it's really hard to control who's dumping there. It's really hard to control when it's being dumped. I thought I had a good handle on it. Just changed the locks last fall, and I was just going down Wilmer Avenue, and I seen this big dump trailer going down the west on Wilmer Avenue, and thought, what in the world are they going with that? So my wife and I followed them out there, and I get to the, I follow them, they're going right to the brush site. And I wonder if they think they got a key, you know? And pulled it up, yeah, they opened it up and went in. So I pull up alongside this person. I said, what is going on? Where did you get this key? But he was working for another guy that had the key. And I took the key back, and I just said, you know, you tell that guy that I want to talk to him about where he got this key. I have no clue. It's just a master lock key, you know? You can copy them. But what I was like to recommend is to, I just don't think it's right that we don't have a way of controlling who's using our facility. I don't think it's fair to the citizens of Wilmer to be paying for the disposal of, one, some contractors that are bringing stuff in, maybe from out of town, which I know that happens. I've followed trailers that have dumped debris, and I wonder where that come from. And I went south of Priam. I don't know. I didn't follow them anymore. I just turned, I just knew it was, because it was like a farm grove cleanup type stuff. We were getting barbed wire and stuff. And when our attendants out there, they have no way of telling you, this guy's from New London, or is he from Pennock? Or is he from Raymond? Or is he just living in rural Wilmer? I just don't know that it's fair to the citizens of Wilmer to not control it better. And to, what I was proposing is that we came up with some sort of a sticker system that for a minimal cost, I mean, just to cover the cost of the sticker. I mean, I don't make that decision, but you come into City Hall and you give them a utility bill or whatever proves that you're a resident of Wilmer, you get this sticker, and you put this on your vehicle when you come in. If you don't have a sticker, you don't dump in there. And the other thing I would propose is that we don't allow mechanical dumping out there, preferably dump trucks and dump trailers, because that's where we're getting the debris is coming. It's not coming from the guy that drives in there with a pickup. So this picture you got here was yesterday. That's the gentleman that was, I caught dumping out there yesterday at 2:00 in the afternoon. I just happened to be driving down Wilmer Avenue, and I see him, and I knew where I was going to go. Did I just advance this? So these are stumps and stuff that we can't grind, and this is kind of a close-up pot of debris that just gets dumped, and we can't grind it. And we've got just these arrows here. Oh, okay. Whoops. This is a debris of waste that can't be ground. We've got several piles like this. There's more stumps and stuff that's dirty, and we can't chip. Let's see, was there? Okay. Okay. But anyways, that, that, this truck called in three loads like that on Sunday, because I was out there Saturday afternoon, and I dug, I stopped and picked up about six bags of garbage along Highway 40 that people called and they just blow off, and they just leave them, and I said, I picked them up, talked to Doug who was working out there, and I knew there was none of that debris. I'd seen them was out there before I left, and, and Doug's come out there before and fallen the gate wide open. He asked me, he goes, you guys leave it open? I said, no, we didn't, but, so, I'm looking for, you know, we have some ideas. I, I think, I, I just think it's right for the citizens of Wimmer to use this facility, but I don't know that it's right for everybody to use this facility. I think if a contractor, I checked with Dunx, Dunx charges $25 on a tandem load of brush. Semi-load is $50. Trailer pickup is $20 load. They'll take grass and leaves at no charge. I know, I've talked to Hurley, I know some of these guys, you know, these commercial haulers, I know them, and I've talked to him, and he's got his own site where he dumps things, but, I mean, these guys come in with, I don't know, I'm not kidding you, they come in with a semi, with a thing, and they're just starting to dump it off, and, you know, if we don't have Creekside, we're looking at 30 grand. I don't know, last year, Frank and I looked at possibly burn that pile, and it was like, it was so big, there was no way we were going to burn it unless we started splitting it up, you know? So it's, it's, it's a problem that's going to get worse unless we address it. My recommendation would be that we, we go to a sticker system and really cut off the commercial haulers. And, and unless you don't want to cut the commercial hauls, then I think they need to pay their fair share to, to do it. But, but the problem is, these chippers or that grind brush, they start out about a half a million dollars for a machine and go up to three quarters of a million dollars. So it's a, it's big time money to have them sitting in your place grinding them up. So, you know, by not having mechanical dumping out there, that really limits it to the homeowners that are using it. And it, it, you know, just, you'd have to see it, I guess, to imagine it, but you know, like, most homeowners are bringing out brush and maybe a few limbs and, and stuff, but you just, that pile was chipped in, was it September?
Yeah, it was like fall.
Yeah, if you go look at it now, I mean, we got to get it chipped here pretty quick. So, I'll pass it on.
Thank you. Thank you for your recommendation. Mr. Neskey.
Councilmember Neskey. I'm just thinking, with a sticker system, I mean, they're already trading keys, aren't they just going to trade stickers? I'm wondering if you haven't figured out where, what, what a load cost would actually be. But if you're a resident, we, we shouldn't be supplementing all of these.
Exactly.
I, I, I am on board with that. I'm just wondering, how, do you have a price tag that, what it would actually cost us for getting rid of it? You know, you mentioned how much it costs to get rid of five years of stuff, but is there a way to charge those commercial drivers per load they bring in?
Well, you know, I suppose you could, we could figure out a way, it's just that the, the getting and grinding is so, so volatile right now. If we don't have a deal with Creekside, it like triples in price.
Okay.
And, and so that's, when I, when we allow Creekside to take compost, and they always leave back for us, and it's not like we're cutting our residents off to take compost because we're not, but when Creekside comes in and they, they clean up our compost for us, that kind of offsets, I mean, that's kind of their little carrot that they want, and they'll do the chips for us, it's kind of a twofold. Plus, they take the chips away. These other companies would grind our chips, but they don't want the chips. So then we would sit with a mountain of chips out there. And, and what I was proposing, or my idea would be to like a, I actually went and just kind of looked at what the cost would be, but like a, a sticker that would say, city Wimmer Brush Site 2018, it goes on your car. You choose what car you want to put on, whatever vehicle you're going to use. If you need two of them, then get two of them for your cars, you know? But then, then you put on that sticker, this sticker one is going to my Chevy Silver Auto, and sticker two is going to my wife's Buick. I mean, I don't know. And I've talked to Kelsey, and, and she would be more than willing to help implement this. And my idea would be, you know, obviously, we can't implement it tomorrow, we have to give people time to know, but if we would move forward, it's like, let's say, June 15th, now after June 15th, you got to have a sticker, it gives people plenty of time to get on board. And it really, and minimal, minimal cost, it's more of a tracking who's using it more than it is trying to create a revenue.
Councilmember Swantus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Manzer, for bringing this to our attention, and I agree that we need to move forward with something like this. But just to correct, I think you probably meant instead of Bush Mills, but Fibroman and Benson. So if anyone is listening, I didn't want to start a rumor that Bush Mills are closed. So, and then, can we assume that if the public is interested in using some of those chips at their home for their own landscaping, are they able to take that themselves and, and use it for personal purposes?
Yes, what, what we have there now, when we have chips and when we chip, we have...
Perry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Too laid back. When, when we, right now, we have a, a very decent sized pile of chippings. And then when Creekside chips for us, he always asked me at the end, how many yards do you want me to leave behind for you? He left back 100 yards last time, and I've probably got 60 of it still sitting there. So there's, there's plenty of opportunities for the residents to get it, and by no means are we trying to cut off residents from getting that stuff at all. We're really trying to regulate what's coming in there.
Sounds good. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when does the county implement theirs?
They're implemented now.
They already did?
Yep.
And then Dunx, they're the only ones that have a site?
No, there's a number of the private contractors that have created their own site because of the different brush sites shutting down that, the commercial haulers.
Do they charge then?
Yes.
Okay. I would say just eliminate the commercial.
And that's what the county did maybe a month ago, I mean, before the season opened up, the, the county made that same decision.
Thank you. Consensus to bring it? Councilmember Elrato.
Thank you. I was just going to maybe suggest that we put up a sign for the commercial haulers to see what if, if they can go to Dunx or wherever, I don't know the sites, but direct them in that direction so they don't, it doesn't end up somewhere alongside the street somewhere, you know?
Right, and, and we've, we can create whatever sign we want out there at this point. You know, no commercial haulers, or call the following numbers if you're a commercial hauler, or something along those lines.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Okay.
One of, one of the things that I really want to emphasize about the, the dump trailers and the dump trucks, is that really identifies commercial haulers in a lot of ways, very few people, average residents, come out with a dump trailer, and, and so, it's, I have to make it so the guy that's sitting out there has a cut and dried answer who can dump and who can't dump. Because he, those guys get a lot of hassle from people sometimes when they tell them to pick their bags up out of the leaves, and it's just amazing what some people say to those guys, and then, you know, they're sitting out there all day, it's a, you know, it's a, a lot of people come through there, I think, what do we have, 14,000, 500 people come through last year, or something like that? It's about 700 a day on a good day, so.
Great. Thank you. Roger.
I think they need to put up security cameras.
I was thinking that, too.
Got a fine, a severe fine for dumping.
Just don't allow that.
Yep.
Commercial security, fine.